Good evening, parents. Hello and welcome to tonight's Facebook Live. Or this isn't a Facebook Live. This is my town hall meeting, my Wednesday night town hall meeting. And I'm Valerie Aprahamian with Advocates for Angels. And I help parents get the education their child needs to thrive, both in school and in life after high school. So I have these town hall meetings every Wednesday night to give parents the latest updates on virtual remote learning and the school closures and where we're at today in terms of our children's education. So I want to let you know that breaking news, Secretary DeVos awards more than $180 million to states rethinking the K-12 education to better meet students' needs during coronavirus disruption. Okay, so she's again given a whole lot of money, $180 million, to certain states that have deemed themselves responsible and obligated to meet the needs of kids during the school closures. So US Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos announced today more than $180 million in new grant funding will be awarded to 11 states rethinking education to better serve students during the Corona pandemic. The Rethink K-12 Education Models Grant will support states' efforts to create new innovative ways for students to continue learning in ways that meet their needs. Awardees of what the states that she awarded were Georgia, Iowa, Louisiana, Maine, North Carolina, New York, Rhode Island, South Carolina, South Dakota, Tennessee, and Texas. So I guess California didn't make the cut. The award ranges from $6 million to $20 million per state. Ensuring every student can continue to learn during the coronavirus pandemic requires innovation from education leaders and a laser focus on doing what's right for students, said Secretary DeVos. This grant will help states adapt and overcome challenges to strengthen education both now and for the longer term. If we've learned anything from this pandemic, it's that the antiquated one-size-fits-all approach to education is no longer tenable and education going forward must be more adaptable and student-centered. I want to congratulate today's awardees for making the needed effort to rethink education on behalf of their students. So those are the states that got between $6 million and $20 million in additional funding to make sure that the 2020-2021 school year provides an equitable virtual remote learning plan for our kids. And it's should not look like March, April, May, and June of last spring. So the next thing I want to tell you is that I've gotten connected with a retired judge. He was an administrative judge that served to listen to the Fair Hearings for Special Education. And his name is Mark Levine. He actually contacted me to support me in my efforts to support you during this time of the school closures because so many parents are struggling, confused, don't know what to do, things are not clear, guidelines aren't clear, parents don't understand what their role is, what their rights are, what to expect. And Mark is wanting to help parents in this time of need when our kids on IEPs are not being served, are not receiving an education, and parents are ending up having to be the teacher, the service providers, the behavioralist, speech and language pathologist, occupational therapist, and so on. Because as we know, we have not been receiving equitable education through the technology online model. So in talking with him, it was very interesting to get his take because, you know, I've been in contact with attorneys and advocates across the nation since March. And, you know, we're all trying to weigh in on what's happening and how to move forward in all of this. And so, you know, he basically said the same thing, which I was happy to hear, that he was kind of confirming what our beliefs are, which is that the districts don't know what they're doing. They're still floundering. They still don't have it together. They are scared because they know that parents are not happy and that they're going to be looking at lots of due process, lots of compliance complaints, and lots of litigation. And they're scared. And, you know, but my thinking is if they're worried and they're scared and they don't know what to do, then why don't they make a better effort to figure it out? Why haven't they, since, you know, we knew that we weren't going back to school way back in March and we knew that the closures were going to be extended, why didn't they start training immediately their teachers? Why didn't they start deciding on what kind of technology platforms they were going to use to provide an education and have everyone have a plan in place? Get a plan in place? Start working with fidelity on how to learn, how to provide schooling online, which they didn't do. What they did do was fight with the school boards this whole time, including throughout the summer, on, you know, whether we were going to open, whether we weren't going to open, if we're going to open, how are we going to open? All the procedures and guidelines and rules and regulations they were going to put our kids under in the opening. And that's what they fought about the whole time. So now here we are, a couple of weeks before schools are supposed to reopen. Now, of course, everybody opens at a different time or, you know, everyone's got their own schedule, even from state to state, from district to district. People have their own, you know, timeline to reopen. But it's happening soon. School's going to be opening soon. And they still aren't clear on what they're doing. If you go on any Facebook teacher's pages, you'll see teachers complaining and saying, "We still don't know what our classes are. We still don't know what our kids are. We still don't know what we're doing or what to expect." Lots of teachers are saying they still don't have any clue about and don't understand technology and how to access, you know, and teach curriculum online. I've spoken to a lot of my teacher friends that are amazing teachers that told me they spent their entire summer training and teaching themselves in how to provide education online, enrolling themselves in trainings and going to Zoom meetings and webinars and things like this to understand how to better serve their child, their students. So he, you know, again confirmed that, you know, they don't know what they're doing. They're going to set out these edicts or, you know, blast PWNs like they've done in the past of, you know, this is what we're doing. We're not doing IEP meetings. We're not doing instruction. We're only doing enrichment like they did in March, April, May, and June. However, it's very well known that when we open up, they are expected and obligated to provide what they're calling now a very strong model. What's the word? They're using the word... Michael, will you turn on the air for me? They're using the word... Oh, no, I can't think of it.
Rigorous.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Liz. Rigorous, that's the buzzword now. This year's going to be a rigorous virtual learning. And so let's see. Let's see how rigorous it's going to be, okay, guys? So, you know, which leads me into my next point, which is that, parents, if you don't know how to hold them accountable to giving your child this rigorous distance learning and remote education, you're going to have to make sure your child gets it. Now, they have the money. It's their obligation to get their crap together and know how to do this and train their teachers and make their, you know, agreements with their school boards. And so, but they're not going to do it, parents. And you're not going to see that funding if you don't know how to make sure that your child gets it and that your child receives it. And so that's why I've been teaching all the ways of, this is what you do, parents, this is how you do it. You have to be the... Take the lead. You have to drive your IEP meetings. You have to, you know, oversee and enforce your parent rights because they certainly are not going to. They are not going to, especially in this situation. I mean, even before the school closures, it was always that way. The advocacy has always been on the role of the parents to ensure that their child's needs are being met. And now it's even more so because they don't know what they're doing and they're not doing it. So, which leads me into my next points. And I'm just going to quickly go over the ways in which you would do this, parents. I talked about this also on my Facebook Lives every Monday morning at 10 o'clock, as well as I teach parents how to do this in my parent membership, where my parents meet with me twice a month on live training calls. And I have curriculum on my parent membership site in which I give them the scripts and the fill-in-the-blank emails and all the information they need in order to implement these things. So I'm going to go over some of those things now. So the first thing you're going to want to do, parents, is again, call an IEP meeting. You need to get on the list to have an IEP meeting for your child. Now, why do you want to call an IEP meeting? Because you want to make sure that you fully understand and that they understand what you expect from them for the upcoming school year. We know it's going to be closed for the first semester. So, you know, and I don't really see very much hope that it's going to open after the Christmas break. But we'll see. But so we know we're going to be in for the first semester. We're going to be in virtual learning. So you want to make sure that your IEP reflects what you wanted to say. You're going to want to make sure that your child's going to get their speech and language virtually online, that your speech and language pathologist is going to get on there and provide your child their sessions as listed in the IEP online. The same thing with your goals and objectives. How are your goals and objectives going to be worked on? When are they going to be worked on? Who is going to do that? How are your accommodations going to be implemented? When is that going to be embedded into the curriculum? Remember, Secretary DeVos said one-size-fits-all doesn't work? They have to make sure that your child is receiving their individualized education identified in your IEP, which is to meet your child's unique needs. It can't be, okay, here's the program, here's the curriculum, and boom, it's going to be for every kid. That's not implementing the IEP. That's a violation of federal law. Your child's IEP has to be implemented. So you want to make sure that that's very clearly documented in your IEP. The next thing you're going to want to request, as I've been talking about as well, is an academic achievement test. So why do you want to ask for an academic achievement test? Which is a standardized test that is embedded into a psychoeducational assessment. So when your child, every three years, they reassess your child and a psychoeducational, it's also called a multidisciplinary test. Within that huge assessment is what's called an academic achievement test. And that is a standardized testing that reviews the child's all areas of academics. So math, reading, writing, their visual processing, their auditory processing, their... Everything in terms of their learning as terms of academics, the core academics in how they learn. All of those areas are within, like phonological reading and fluency and all the areas of reading, all the areas of writing, all the areas of math. So, and the reason you want to get those very current scores is going to tell you where is your child right now academically. And then you can take those scores and you could look back at how much that they have regressed during this time when they haven't received an education. Because we know that all children have regressed. And I've said that before about general ed kids have regressed 50% in math and 30% in reading. Or it could be the other way around. But it's a lot of regression for general ed kids. So we know our special ed children have regressed even more than that because of, of course, our special ed kids, they lose their skills much more quickly and they learn at a slower pace than general ed kids. So you're going to get your... And these present levels are called the PLOAP, the Present Levels of Academic Performances. That's what you're going to have to use to look at how far they've regressed. And then you'll know, here's where my child is now in all areas of academics. So you'll know, are the goals still appropriate? Maybe goals are going to have to be modified or rewritten so that you can have accurate goals to move forward with this school year and hold the district accountable to making sure your child makes progress with this rigorous virtual learning plan that they're going to be providing us. Okay? Now, that also is going to give you the information you need to ask for compensatory education or compensatory services. That means comp ed or comp services means that they're going to make up for what they didn't give you in March, April, May, and June. So if you want to ask them and say, "Look, I want you to make up for the, you know, 25 sessions of speech that you didn't give my child." And you can't just, you know, it's out the window because they didn't give it. You have a right to ask for it. So your academic achievement test is going to also help you substantiate your requests for the academic instruction that they didn't provide you as well because teachers did not get on and teach your child. They only had enrichment. They only threw a bunch of stuff at you for you to be the teacher. And your child didn't grow academically. So that would be compensatory education or compensatory services. Now, you know, why would you ask for that? Because, parents, if we don't hold them accountable to what they did before that was incorrect, that violated our parent rights, it was wrong that they did that. That the IDA, which I've said over and over again, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act has not been waived. The Secretary DeVos did not waive IDA, even though we're in this pandemic, which means that the school district was still obligated to provide your child their IEP, but they did not do so. And because they didn't do so, you have the right to ask for them to make up for what they didn't provide your child before. Now, they're going to say no. They're going to say no. But it's still going to be documented that you asked for it and that you have it in writing that... In writing saying, "You didn't provide this, this, and this." And be specific, be factual. Go back and look at your IEP and see how... Count up how many sessions were missed. Make sure that you document that and ask specifically for that. Now, this needs to be done in writing. So how you would do that is you would provide these things in a parent agenda, which you're going to have... See, how you're going to be preparing for your IEP meeting. You're going to write up a document. The top is going to say "parent agenda" and your child's name and the date of the IEP meeting. And you're going to write down all of these things. Number one, you want to review your child's goals and objectives. Number two, you're going to ask for... This isn't actually the... I'm just, you know, throwing it out there. It might not be this order. But you're going to ask for an academic achievement test. You're going to make sure that they have... You want to know what are they planning on doing? How's this rigorous virtual program going to look like? When, you know, like I said before, when are the services going to be provided? When is the academic instruction going to be provided? When is your teacher going to get online and teach your child real classes, real lessons? That's rigorous, parents. Rigorous means that your child gets taught by a teacher, a real teacher, teaching your kid. And that also you have the right to ask for those lessons to be tape-recorded so that you can have them and a recording to go back and reteach your child at a later time. So those are some of the things you want to put in your parent agenda. And then any other issues or concerns that you might have that you want to address at your IEP meeting, you're going to also put those things in your parent agenda. Because that parent agenda becomes a legal paper trail of a piece of a document, which is an evidence, to show what you were concerned about, what you were asking for. And it becomes a part of your child's file. And you can also request that that parent agenda become a part of that IEP and ask for it to be page-numbered and included into your IEP document. When they page-number your IEP, it can be at the end and they can page-number and include it because those are your parent rights. You're an equal IEP team member. It's not just them talking at you and telling you what they're going to do. You have the right to be fully informed and to have just as much input and weigh in on what your child's next year is going to look like. And this is how you start doing that, parents, is by writing a parent agenda. And make sure they go over your parent agenda, that they look at every issue, go down it, discuss it with the IEP team, and then document it in the IEP. Because if you hand them your parent agenda and they look at it and go, "Oh, isn't that nice?" Well, add it to the IEP. And then they just move on. Your voice wasn't heard. Your concerns and requests were not addressed. And they can't tell you, "Oh, we don't have time for that. We have to do, you know, this or that." No, you make sure you provide that parent agenda prior to the meeting, so you don't just give it to them that day. You email it to them prior to the meeting and you say in your email, "I am requesting that my parent agenda be reviewed during my IEP meeting." And you're going to want to make sure that your IEP meeting is allotted a two-hour timeframe. You don't want it restricted to a short period of time where you're never going to be able to get through your parent agenda. And then you'll have to come back and reconvene a whole 30 days later, delay, delay, delay. So you're going to make sure you want to ask for at least a two-hour timeframe so that you can get through your agenda. And also, I want to talk about assessments. So right now, they're trying to figure out, you know, assessments. And so, you know, when they can't figure things out and it's too hard for them, they'll just say, "Well, we're not doing it right now." And which is, again, a violation that they can't just waive things and say, "We're not doing this right now because of the school closure." IDA has remained in place. They can't say they're not doing things that they wouldn't normally do. So how are they going to do assessments? This is a problem because typically they will observe the child in the school grounds, in the classroom, and, you know, meet with the teachers and so on. Now, the only thing that they can't do in an assessment would be observe your child in the school ground, an observation of your child sitting in the class and learning. They can still, you know, if it's... Sometimes it's not going to work. Sometimes kids will not be able to test virtually with an assessor because they're not going to listen. They're not going to do it well. If it's not going to be done well, then that's fine. They can't do it. But they can certainly interview the parents. You can interview with them virtually. They can interview the teachers. They can send the teachers the rating scales and all the questionnaires. They can do lots of other things that are a part of an assessment during this time while we're waiting. Because if we waive it, you know, like I said, we might not be back till after Christmas break. We might not be back for a whole year. So they have to, you know, one of the things Secretary DeVos said is, "We must work creatively and innovatively to meet the needs of the kids." So, and also, there were some guidelines that came down that recommended just exactly what I just said. There are many things they can do virtually that will begin an assessment and gather good information on how to move forward to help the child. They, you know, so it, you know... So we have to be flexible with an assessment at this time. You know, it's not going to look like it typically does, which is another thing that Secretary DeVos said. It's going to be, things are going to be done in an alternative manner, in an alternative mode. So this is one of them, an assessment. It's going to be done in an alternative manner. So I just had a conversation with a program specialist today about this very issue. And they were saying, "Well, we're not going to do the FBA because of blah, blah, blah." Just exactly what I said. We're not... They're not in school. How are they going to observe the behavior in the classroom? So on and so forth. And I said the exact same thing I said to you. So now, "Well, let me go back and talk to my boss and see what they have to say." Well, it's like, you know, everybody knows this. They're doing it across the nation. Lots of other school districts are doing it this way. But, you know, some school districts are plain dumb. So, you know, this is why you need to know this information, parents, so that you don't let them pull the wool over your eyes and you don't know how to respond. There are innovative ways they can address these things that are difficult right now because of this situation. So then you're going to have your IEP meeting with your parent agenda. And you're going to make sure every one of your issues is addressed, discussed by the IEP team. And then they document it in the IEP. And they have to document it and say, "Parent agenda number one, we discussed it and this was the decision. We decided to do blah, 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 blah." Because they have to come to a resolution or a decision on what your issue was. So either they're going to do it and they added it to your IEP, or they're going to say, "No, we're not going to do that." And they have to write it in your IEP. The team said that they denied that request of the parent. And this is why. And they have to write that. Or they're going to say, "Well, you know, we don't know. We can't really approve that right now at this very moment. We're going to have to go back and ask our boss about this." If they say that and they can't give you an answer right there, then they have to write in your IEP. The IEP team, you know, had a discussion. And the district will respond to the parent with a PWN, a prior written notice, which is a legal response to a parent request that will give you your answer. It's either going to deny your request or it's going to approve your request. And they have to give that to you within 15 days. Okay? So that's what you're going to do with your parent agenda at your IEP meeting. Then after your meeting, you're going to... If there's a lot of issues that didn't go well because, you know, most of these times, most of these IEPs don't go well. Okay? So you're going to respond in a letter. And you're going to write in your letter, "We had the IEP meeting and these are the things that happened." And you're going to list the things that happened that you didn't like, that they didn't add, that they didn't write, that they wrote the notes incorrectly. They didn't add your comments. They basically falsified the notes because they wrote it in a biased way. If you want them to change the notes. If you want them, you know, whatever you want to say about your meeting, that's your follow-up letter. Okay? Again, you're documenting your concerns and requests. It's a legal paper trail. And you always want to get this in your head. Documentation, legal paper trail. Because then you have evidence to go back and say, "Look, six months ago, I had an IEP meeting and I talked about that. I had it on my parent agenda and I followed up in a letter. And here we are, six months later, and you guys still aren't doing anything about it." That's how you start to hold them accountable, parents. Okay? So you have your follow-up letter. Or you might have to write what's called a partial agreement. So it could be, you write up a follow-up letter and a partial agreement, or you do a partial agreement and you don't have to do a follow-up letter. But this, these are the things you can choose to do to address after your IEP meeting. So if you don't agree with some of the things in the IEP, you don't sign your IEP. Don't ever sign your IEP if you don't agree with your IEP parents. It's a say... I always go back to the same thing. If you were to sign any contract, you're never going to sign a contract that you don't agree to, that you don't like, that you don't want to put your signature on. So you don't sign your IEP if you don't agree to it. Now, if you're just happy as a clam and they did everything you want and you feel really amazing and good and there's nothing in there you don't agree with, great, then you're going to sign your IEP. Typically, that's not going to happen. So how you would write... How you would sign your IEP is you're going to write a partial agreement. A partial agreement is in lieu of your signature. And what a partial agreement entails is is that you're going to say, "I agree to the implementation of my IEP except for..." And then you're going to list your areas of dissent that you are not in agreement with. That way, it's very clear that you want them to move forward because there's things in your IEP you want. They're going to... They want them to implement your speech. You want them to implement whatever it is that you want them to move forward with. But then there's things in there that you don't agree with. So you can identify those areas of dissent in your partial agreement. And you're going to sign that and you're gonna say, uh, this is, this is, um, this, this partial agreement will serve as my signature. In lieu of me signing my IEP. Because it's a much stronger way to implement what you want and make your dissents very, uh, well known and strong. For them to be obligated to come back and resolve those issues with you. Because if you sign your IEP partially on one B that says I agreed in my IEP except for. They, they can attest and approve your IEP. They got your signature. They did their due diligence and they got your signature, which is what they have to do. They don't really care about what you didn't agree with on one B. That you'll never hear from them again. You'll be chasing them, they have the power because they got your signature. The other way in a partial agreement, they're gonna be much more interested in talking to you and reconvening and fixing what you don't want. Because you didn't sign your IEP. So you, so the ball's in your court and you have the power. When you don't sign your IEP and you write a partial agreement. So those are some of the positives about doing that in that manner. So, um, so those are the things that, um, I've been focusing on and helping parents with in the, uh, parent membership. And those are the things you should be doing, parents, as we move forward in, uh, getting ready to get, to get back to school. So, um, hey Peter, how you doing? Haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah, I just noticed I was missing it. Uh, yeah, uh, that's an interesting idea. I've always on, I think you need to say something on the original sheet. Because otherwise they have a way of losing the other one. So you do have to say on the original sheet, see attached or something like that if you wanna do it that way. I've never really seen a problem with going ahead and signing it on the original sheet myself. You just have to write clearly on there, on the exceptions, except for this, except for that. The other thing that I do is a lot of times we run into is, yeah, we want the services, they're crap, but they're better than nothing. And, but they're not fake. So we usually will say, if that's true, as it almost always is, we'll say, uh, although, uh, this does not offer fake, we're, we're, we consent to implementation because it's better than nothing.
Right, right, yeah. Though we move forward, but it's not fake, right. But now, so do you recommend them signing at the bottom? Or just saw, do initially one B and say, please see my, my partial agreement?
I think you could do it either way. What you have to make clear, what you, if you do write it on there. Uh, you, you certainly have to make it clear that your consent is conditional and that's what it is. If they wanna say you had consent to the agreement, well, the piece of paper comes out, well, you've seen it, it was a conditional consent. And that's what we consented to and that's what we didn't, it was a, it was a consent with exceptions. So I've never really had a problem with that.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna argue vigorously against suspicion.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And you know, the reason, um, in my experience, especially with CNUSD. We've done, we've written, you know, with exception and re- really, they don't care. They, they could care less that it was with exception. They're, they're like approved and attested. You know, even the program specialist will say, okay, this meeting has been approved and attested, parent's signature. And they, they don't come back and try to resolve those, those areas in dissent. They just.
You can always, it seems like you, to me, that you can always follow up with a compliance complaint if they do something you didn't allow. Uh, you can throw in a compliance complaint or even a due process, uh, filing or whatever. Uh, to say, look, you never got consent for that because here's what the consent consisted of, it was partial. California's a consent state, it's cafeteria, uh, consent here.
Yeah, but I mean, things that, that you disagree with, that you want, you know, like you're asking for, just throwing out, um, thirty additional minutes of speech.
Okay.
Right? Or, or things like that, that you want actually changed, that they're not wanting to do. And, um, they really don't care.
Right. Well, sure, then you gotta enforce it. You gotta say, look, I consented to you doing the thirty minutes. But it's not fake and it's not good enough. And, and I, I didn't agree, when I agreed to you doing this, I was explicit that I was not, uh, telling you that it's poker. I'm just telling you that it's better than nothing, but it's still not adequate. And, and one way or another, you gotta make that clear.
Yes.
And since you've had more experience with Corona Norco than I have, uh, your advice may be very good here.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've found that, that they, they sit up and listen when we don't put a signature on there.
Yeah, but on the original sheet, you have to say something because otherwise they're gonna, they might lose the piece of paper.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, I get that totally. So, um, so, uh, what, what have, what's been, uh, any, uh, you have any news that you could share with us? Um, any updates or anything?
Well, as far as Corona Norco, uh, not a whole lot. I, I do have one of my clients that we're trying to get hooked up with an attorney on. Uh, I got my hands a little freer, I just got one settled over in, uh, uh, over Santa Monica.
Oh.
So we're gonna be able to get that, you know, that, that thing, we're all agreed and it's just a matter of signatures and I can start collecting the money. So that worked out pretty good. So there are some things that are, you know, that are okay there. I've been kinda tired lately and stuff and not as functional as I should be, but still, uh, you know, we have things going. Uh, Corona Norco is a horrible district and we do have to mobilize and do something about them.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I'm still, I'm still planning on writing lots and lots of, um, of compliance complaints. I talked to Mark Levine, you know, the retired, uh, special ed judge, do you know him?
I do not. Was he in OAH ALJ?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was, and I talked to him yesterday and he, he, I asked him about the group complaint. And he said, no Valerie, you should just write single complaints because it's gonna be much more powerful. Rather than, you know, grouping them together like twenty-five, um, complaints, even though they're gonna be very similar. He said, it's gonna make a bigger impact if you write them singularly.
It's probably true.
So I'm like, okay. Cause I was gonna do the group thing, but I, I've never done that before, but I just thought, you know, I, I thought it would be more powerful. Because it's like, right, you know, doing a, a group or a, um, class action lawsuit, you know, you would think that's more powerful. So, but he didn't think so in terms of complaint. So I'll do that, so, yeah. But yeah, I'm still planning on absolutely doing that because, um.
Well, you know, your original word there of, of having people parade in front of a, uh, board and stuff. And, and also that transparency in USD Facebook page is a good place for people to talk about things. We just need to make a stick. The other thing that I'd really like to see if there's anybody that would like to be willing to run against the people that are now up for, uh, election. I think there's two different areas in which they have, uh, people there and it's not hard to file. And I can certainly arrange to help you actually file. It's not a big deal. You gotta throw in a form seven hundred and whatever else they tell you at the registrar voters. And, and I know that Rita Louve didn't really actively campaign, she just filed. She, uh, appeared before a couple of groups, uh, and, and talked to them and stuff like that. But otherwise she was reading for the exercise and she had no expectation of winning in twenty eighteen. But she won fifty-five to forty-five. Her opponent was a, was a potted plant named Sherman Garnett. And he was sure that he was just gonna slide in there, but she didn't, it wasn't even close. It was fifty-five to forty-five and she didn't even work, she didn't have signs or anything. So it's worth running. They may underestimate.
Awesome. Rita is so awesome. I love her.
Well, she never thought she'd end up on the county board, but she did. She didn't have to spend any money or anything. So if there's anybody in the sound of my voice or, or the sound of anybody else's voice that's here, that would be willing to file, uh, to run against these people, that wouldn't be a bad idea, especially since I think a lot of people are discontented with them for a lot of reasons. So I think they're kind of vulnerable. And if we could just get one decent person on that board, it would make a big difference.
Oh, I know, I know. So there's two positions open on the school board?
Yeah, I'd have to look again, but you know, you go to their site and you can see, you look at the difference. I think there's seven of them on the board. Uh, and they tell you each one how like, what their term is and if their term is twenty twenty, then that's what it is.
Do you have to live within the, the district, uh, boundaries?
You have to live within each area. They got district, they, they, uh, they saw the California writing votes act and they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna shankman suit. So they, they made it district level, which the advantage of that is that you got a much smaller thing to run in. If you wanna pay for a candidate statement, that's based on how many voters you got. So if it's district wide, well, then it's a whole lot easier. Uh, I mean, if it's just areas and rather than at large, you got a lot less voters to deal with. So, uh, it, it, that becomes a lot cheaper. But of course, that means.
I couldn't run because I don't live in Corona Norco anymore.
Well, yeah, I mean, no, it's, you can't run to be on a school board in a district where you don't live. That's true.
Okay, okay.
Furthermore, you gotta live in a particular area. So you gotta look at the map and see who your particular person is and that's who you run against.
Okay. Yeah.
It's really worth doing.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
Very complacent, so actually having some opposition, if we get lucky and one of them gets knocked off, that'd be even better.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Anyway, if you want, I'll do a little research on that for you.
Okay, okay. Well, San Diego is horrific too. San Diego is even worse than Corona Norco. Which I've learned now from living here.
That's astounding.
Yeah, I, it isn't, it is, isn't it? I, 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 I am shocked too. I thought no one could be that bad. And yeah, they're, they're worse.
And how are they worse? Where do they do this?
Well, for one thing, they sick, um, private investigators on parents who advocate and who they don't like. And Rita talked about that in Euplin too, that they do that in Euplin, right?
That was Thag and Friedman and Fullfrost that did that.
Yes, yes.
The thing to do, the thing to do with that is.
Diego too, they're San Diego's council.
So, well, yeah, they've really turned into assholes. A few years ago, I, I had no problems with them. They were among the better firms and I could deal with them and it was really okay. And actually last year, uh, Howard Fullfrost was, uh, had a, had a thing with me and Pomona. And he and I worked things out just fine. He wasn't any problem. But Jonathan Reed and the people who work with him, especially Tiffany Santos and, and those people, they're hideous people. And they'll do all kinds of things. The other thing they do is they issue subpoenas for all kinds of shit that has absolutely nothing to do with the case. Against the IEEs and stuff in order to harass the IEEs. And we're letting them get away with that so far.
Yes.
So I'm gonna have to end up in the district court and it's gonna end up in the district court because we have a case right now. It's certain that the ALJ is gonna do, do us wrong like the ALJ has been doing, been doing all along. And I think it'll be good in the district court, especially since the, the ALJ has been screaming at, at, at Tanya and stuff like that. And just generally speaking, really looking pretty awful. And that's gonna be very helpful. That'll make a good record because federal judges don't like that.
Right.
They, they have a courtesy and, and professional conduct guidelines there, which they post. Which if you don't adhere to those, they will find ways to punish you. They do not like this courtesy in the district court. So if we have the ALJ screaming abuse at, uh, at our attorney, it'll, it'll make for a good appeal.
Yes. Boy, those guys need it. They're just horrible. Wow, I've never seen anything like it. And, and what's funny too is the advocates and attorneys that work in this area are in cahoots with, with the district. There, so I have lots of my moms that are working, wanting to get help and the advocates and attorneys are just as bad. That, that, they're actually, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I tell people, look, you gotta be careful. I mean, sped world, you, you know, it's what the prosecutors say. That, um, that swans don't swim in sewers and sped world is a sewer, so you don't run into a lot of swans. So, to the, we know that lots of independent assessors are, will show for the district and stuff. So that we find advocates and attorneys that will do the same thing, should not be shocking to us. You just have to be careful to realize that that's how it is. A lot of people find it awfully attractive to collect fees without doing any work. And, and to earn those fees by screwing the parents over. That's just something you have to look out for. You wanna go get your car fixed? Figure there's a lot of people out there that are gonna screw you over when it comes to fixing your car. Yeah, welcome, welcome to this wicked world. I mean, that's what it is.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah, uh, just shocking though, just shocking.
Can't ever completely get used to it.
No. It's horrible. So, um, so anybody have any, uh, questions, um, here? Any of the moms have any questions or, um, comments? Or, um, wanna weigh in on anything, guys?
Ladies?
Ladies. Ladies, I'm starting the new year with our rigorous remote learning. You guys gotta have some questions.
Am I muted? Can you hear me, Val?
Yeah, I can.
Hi.
Hello, how you doing Kate?
I'm doing good, how are you doing?
I'm good, thanks.
I did have a question. When it comes to requesting, um, compensatory services or, um, education. Would you start from, let's say, school shut down on the thirteenth of March? Would you start the following week or would it be when the district sent out notice that they would start providing distance learning? Which I wanna say is, was like after spring break, like maybe even almost a month later.
Yeah, well, they, the services they didn't provide, they didn't provide. So you know, it's up to the district and then it's up to the state. If you write a complaint on what, how, you know, flexible they're gonna be with that. But I would just name everything that they didn't provide.
Okay.
Well, that's what you're complaining about. What I wanna point out here is the compensatory service is not a one-to-one thing. In other words, if they, if they screwed you out of twenty-one hours of speech, they don't get to say, well, we'll give you twenty-one hours of speech. Which you get to drink out of a fire hose because you're supposed to be getting stuff anyway. So it could be that those twenty-one hours of speech, if they gave them to you one-to-one, whatever they screwed you out of, wouldn't be any good anyhow. And then of course, there's also the point that probably the services they're giving you aren't much good anyway. So what you wanna do is find out, you know, document what they did you out of. And now this is what they owe you. And now you figure, well, what can I do to bring the kid to where he ought to be? And that may be completely different stuff. Maybe the speech service is what the kid ought to get instead of some audiology. If the kid has a central auditory processing disorder, you know, or, or whatever. So you wanna take, here's the value of, of whatever it is they did you out of. And here's, here's what we want in the way of comps or reimbursement or something like that in order to make it right. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in the same currency that they, that they did you out of. Uh, and, and the advantage of that is that you have a better chance of actually getting some services that are worthwhile. Because let's get real, they give you speech services, they give you OT services, they're generally not much good anyhow. So, and maybe you can cash them for something else. Maybe you can make a little settlement, you can make a little settlement agreement in which they reimburse you for, you know, four, five, ten thousand bucks, whatever it is. In exchange for which you forget about all of what it is. And so you manage to actually get some stuff under your control, which you can get from providers that know what they're doing. Uh, and that are there to actually do something for your kid instead of proof that, that the district is doing the right thing, your kid be damned, which is what it usually is. So actually that they've done you out of comps can be an opportunity for you to get something that actually works.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So if you want something else that would be better to make up for the regression, Kate, then you can ask for that. Or a private agency to provide it, right, Peter? You can ask for a private agency to provide it. Because, yeah, because, you know, okay, they're not in school right now, but say they were, you know, they can't, to make up for a bunch of services. And that, that means more pullout. So that wouldn't be feasible either to kid, pull kids out of class to make up for all the services they didn't give. So you can actually, you know, very, you know, reasonably ask for, it's very warranted. To ask for a private agency to provide the services, okay?
And then, I mean, one of the things to look out for, they're giving the kids speech services, has been a year now. And how much has actually happened with the kid's speech? And not, not much has happened with the kid's speech. Keep in mind that anything that they do for you, which isn't doing you good, is doing harm. Cause it's wasting the kid's time and energy, it's teaching the kid that he's stupid and can't make any progress, it's doing all kinds of bad things. So nothing is much better than stuff that's no good. So you don't, if, if it's, what they're doing is no good and you've seen it and it hasn't been working, getting more of that stuff that isn't working is not.
Right.
So. Actually, actually, Peter, I, I was listening to a conversation you and Valerie had in a previous video. And you said something that stunned me because a couple, a few years ago, my son had some anxiety issues. Valerie was a part of that and, uh, the OT had said, I think Valerie had requested, like, maybe we should do like a cap D. We ended up skipping on that and the OT did, uh, they basically took dead on his heart rate. They got him an Apple Watch, he had fears of fire alarms. So every time his, um, heart rate elevated, they, there, there would be, um, an Apple Watch or like a, a, a feature on the Apple Watch. I would trigger him to do calming, breathe, uh, breathing techniques to calm him down, which worked. But I thought it was so interesting because you, some parent, another parent was making a comment and you had said, if the kid is getting speech or if he can read, but he doesn't comprehend what he's reading, there's another problem. And he, you're like, well, he can't read at all and just, I don't know, there were fireworks in my mind because I thought that is my son. Like he can read till the cows come home, but he cannot comprehend beyond, you know, a certain level. And we've been working on this for years. I mean, honestly, probably since eighth grade.
Yep.
So you gotta, you gotta get to the bottom of that. First off, what is reading? If, if all I gotta do is be able to read the stuff fluently without understanding it, that's perfect. I can read Spanish.
Right.
Right? Am I reading Spanish if I can read this stuff and I, you know, any idiot can read Spanish. Because after all, I mean, there it is, it's phonetic and what it is and you. Because after all, I mean, there it is. It's phonetic and what it is. And you see the accents and stuff. If, if reading consists of simply being able to read off the words and you don't understand anything, that's great. But I don't think anybody's gonna figure that I'm an adequate Spanish reader. I can stumble along through things. But if it's not comprehension, it's not reading. The purpose of reading is already to understand what's on the page. Otherwise, you're not reading. So, that's, that's essential. So, why is the kid not understanding it? And, and one of the things to think of obviously is visual processing problems. Anything which is interfering with the kid. Say he can't track, he's gotta keep, he keeps losing his place or anything. Or else it's a pain in the ass because the words are wandering around on the paper or something like that. All that kind of stuff is gonna enable the kid maybe to be able to still be able to read fairly fluently. But all of the hassle involved in actually doing so, it doesn't leave any brain cells left to process what's getting into his head. So, it's, it's the same thing. I mean, if somebody, if you're, if you're reading something while somebody is talking to you and you have to think about what they're talking about, you'll discover that you may be able to read the words fluently and you can't understand anything because your brain is not available for the work of actually digesting what you're reading. Because you're too busy putting brain cells into actually getting the stuff read. So, you have to suspect that there are reading problems. Say a convergence insufficiency, which will make it difficult. But you, you can still do it. You know, you can actually concentrate and make your eyes actually work on it. But the effort of making stuff work like that, I mean, it's the same thing if you're driving. You gotta keep, you know, feathering the accelerator and everything because there's some water in the gas. You're not gonna be able to pay the proper attention to driving that you're supposed to. So, you have to look into what, what kind of things are causing those comprehension problems. Now, another thing that'll do that is auditory processing difficulties. If you have a central auditory processing difficulty, reading, basically, you're saying it to yourself. You have to turn it into something auditory in order to process it. So, that can be another reason why you're having a problem with comprehension. Okay, so you're reading it, but you're not able to process the auditory result that you're translating into your head to actually, to, to get it. And so, you have problems there. Anyway, the whole comprehension thing, you have to find out what's going on there. And, and until you have, then it's a waste of time. And for them to talk this nonsense, see, oh, the kid's reading because his fluency's okay. That's absurd. So, you don't, you don't put up with it. And you do have to get them assessed properly to find out what's causing the comprehension problem.
Okay.
And, and visual and auditory are the most common problems that are, you know, that will do that. And both of them need to be looked at properly. And if it turns out that that's what it is, fixing the problems involved, if you run into a sensible provider, usually isn't all that difficult.
And so, Val, you said that since Ryan isn't transitioning, he can still qualify to get these assessments? It doesn't matter that he's transitioned to the adult program?
Well, see, that's the thing though, Peter, is he, he's going to the adult transition program. So, they're really not gonna have academic, unless you went back and asked for comp ed because they never taught him how to read, right?
You're allowed comps even after you leave the district in many cases. I'm thinking of Jaren Draper v Atlantic Public School District where they finally, after, after they graduated the kid one way or another and stuff, they went back and the district ended up, they'd said that the kid was mentally retarded when he wasn't anything of the kind for years and they, and they knew better and stuff. And, and so they ended up having to pay for the kid to go to college.
Yeah. Nice. Yeah. So, yeah, Kate, you can still, because he's still in the district, he's still gonna have three more years left.
Yeah, how old is he?
He's 18.
18? That's, you got a long time. They can't wash their hands of the kid till he's 22. So, yes, you get them assessed right now and you get independent evaluations. And then, of course, you're gonna have to make them do some things.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough, that's for sure.
Well, yeah. They're gonna, they're gonna resist.
Need help.
What district are we talking about anyway?
Paris. Paris. Yeah, Paris, yeah.
I've never actually dealt with them before.
I have. They're, they're horrific.
Actually, it was Romoland that was horrific. Paris wasn't as bad.
That's right.
Well, Romoland, my experience in Romoland is that they're really stupid, they're really evil, but they don't wanna fight. So, they will absolutely screw you over if they can get away. I mean, there are districts-
Yeah, Romoland was middle school and then high school was Paris. And I think that's, that's was with Cindy. Val, and she worked with you. She tried, you know, she worked well with you, I think.
Yeah, she's, they still, though, the huge delay factors.
Well, you got different kinds, you have different kinds of bad districts. You got bad districts that'll fight you to death and you have to litigate everything and, and so forth. There are some of those. And I mean, Altoloma is one of them. For example, Chino is another one that's like that. And Cronin Orco mostly is like that. But then there are a lot of districts that are really awful if they think they can get away with it. But once they see that they're not gonna get away with it, and this is my recent experience in Santa Monica, oh, they were, they were real hardasses and they wouldn't even assess when the parent asked them to. We beat them in a compliance complaint and so forth. And then we went back and forth and now we just negotiated something. And then I filed for a section 504 hearing against them, which they didn't like that much. But we got everything settled up. They didn't actually wanna go to the wall. They did what they could. They're, you know, they're following Vladimir Lenin's dictum that you push the bayonet in until it hits bone. But when they hit bone, they stop pushing. So, I think that Paris is probably one of those kind. When they see that it's gonna be painful for them, then they will settle up.
Uh huh. Yeah.
So, you know, it, the proverb is true, the wicked puts on a bold face. So, just because they're being hardasses and, well, we're never gonna do this and we're never gonna do that. Well, let's see what happens when, when you actually apply some pressure.
Oh, yeah. Yep, it's the size you up thing. That they're gonna see, how far are you gonna push it, Kate? And, yeah, that's what they're gonna do.
And of course, they're not gonna like you and everything else. But I like to remind people, look, you know, that you weren't planning to date them anyway. So, if they don't like you, it's okay.
I don't care.
Exactly. What are they gonna do? They, how many times are they gonna be allowed to hit you with a rubber hose because they don't like you? Not many, right? So, okay.
I know. It's, you know, they, they think you're an idiot if you don't advocate and stand up. And then they hate you if you do. So, it doesn't matter anyway.
Thank you both.
You're welcome. I hope, I think Peter's, Peter, I think you're frozen. Who else has a comment or a question? Or is anybody in this process of requesting an IEP or, or starting to prepare your parent agenda? That you wanna ask questions on?
Now, I wanted to ask you, when you were talking about the partial agreement and leave the signature and then, then after you do that, then do you wait for a PWN?
So, your partial agreement, either they're, they, they, it depends on how they want to respond to that. They could respond with a PWN saying, no, we're not gonna do that. Or yes, we're gonna do this and this. And no, we're not gonna do that and that. Or they might say, and this is what they typically do. They'll say, let's call another IEP meeting and discuss it further and try to come to an agreement. So, that's, that's typically what they do. They're gonna want to come back to the table with the IEP team and then, and then try to resolve it there. Now, what I, what I've typically have found that, you know, I'll do that. And then if, and then if they don't resolve it there, that's when I take it to the director, the Selpa director and I'll, and I'll present it to her. It depends. If I think that I can get the Selpa director to resolve it, then I'll go to her. If I don't think I can get her to resolve it, I just write a compliance complaint. And then, and then if it doesn't get, if that, it doesn't fix it, then we file for hearing. That's kind of the steps after the IEP meeting that you would take.
Um, Valerie, did you talk about, because I'm noticing they're talking about, when they talk about the way they have to teach, you know, the way teachers have to teach. And it's coming from, they're, they're saying it's Senate Bill 98. Have you talked about that?
No, I haven't.
And I don't know what's gonna happen with it anyway. They dragged it into court, so it may get overturned.
Well, that's what they're, 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 they're saying to us at Senate Bill 98. When it talks about special ed services, it says implementation, implementation of appropriate accommodations and specialized instruction necessary for students with exceptional needs to assess core curriculum and services listed in their IEP, the IEP. So, and, and they're stating that they have to follow it. They have to do all the virtual, all the virtual speech, OT, IEPs, everything. They're being held accountable.
Uh huh.
Like they haven't, like they weren't before. And even, even for teachers, we are told that we have to do 260 minutes of teaching a day.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. It has to be 260 minutes of teaching a day. And, and we have to Zoom every single day, five days a week. We have to do the Zoom in English Language Arts and Math. We also have to do Zooms in Science. We have to go back and we have to do small group intervention with students that are not getting it. Yeah, I mean, there, it's, it's gonna, it is gonna be, it's looking like it's gonna be very rigorous. And it's the district that is giving us our schedule of what it has to look like, which is-
Wow.
Very strange because we've never had to be told how to teach or what our schedule should. We always made our schedules, but they're giving us our schedule. This is what you have to do.
Wow.
And this is what your day is gonna look like. And this is what you have to teach.
Well, that sounds good.
You should be able to agree with the district, with, with, with the parent that if it's not appropriate for the kid, if the kid can't access it that way, violate section 504. And there isn't a statute that the, that this state can apply that overturns section 504. So, if it denies a kid equal access to the curriculum, like trying to teach him all kinds of language arts and the kid just, ain't no way he can attend, then something else has to be done.
Right, right.
Yeah, and it, and it states that they have to figure it out.
Yes, they have to figure it-
They have to figure it out. Not you, but they have to figure it out. And it's even on the schedule that parents have to be with their child a lot of the time, observing and making sure that their child, child is on. And then when there's breaks, that the parent has to be with them during the break. So, I don't know how that's gonna go, you know?
And how can they, how can they enforce anything?
I don't know. They're asking parent, they're, they're, you know, parents don't know that they, it, it can't be enforced. They're just thinking, oh, no, that's, that's the expectation. So, parents think, oh, that's my, the expectation. Oh, I guess I have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, people need to learn that just because they like something, they expect it. It's like Sir Mick said, you can't always get what you want.
No, but, yeah, but parent, parents, they, they will think that, oh, I, I guess I have to do it. That, that's, that's the expectation and, and they will.
You know, parents need to be educated about that. You're there to take care of your kid. You're not there to take care of the district. District's pretty good at taking care of themselves without us. So, just because they want something doesn't mean that they get it. And you know, they'll do that a lot. They'll say, we're requesting that you do this or that and stuff. What that means is that they don't have a leg to stand on. They can't have it. So, they're just hoping that just because they've asked for it, that you're just gonna have to give it to them. Well, is it true? I mean, somebody can say, you know, well, you know, you know, I'd really like to have sex with you. It doesn't mean you gotta come across. I mean, there's a lot of things they can say they want, doesn't mean they're gonna get it.
Yeah.
We have to have that mentality. What is this doing to my kid? And if it's bad for my kid, then why should I do that? And what are you gonna do to make me?
Exactly. You should tell the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Angie.
I was gonna say, how about all the times when we request things the district does? They don't do them.
Yeah.
Oh, God, no. Yeah.
Yeah, and lots of kiddos, especially on the spectrum, aren't gonna be able to access it. They're not gonna be able to do it. So, and that's the district's problem to figure that out. How are the kids gonna access the curriculum? So, if they can't access the virtual, I mean, I'm just glad to hear that they're making teachers get on and teach, really teach now. That's, that's a step in the right direction. But then we're still, you know, in the same situation with a lot of these kiddos with autism aren't gonna do it when they, when the teacher finally does get on. So, yeah, it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, that, that's a different story. Yeah.
Different story.
Yeah.
Exactly. Exactly. But a lot of, a lot of moms are gonna have that situation.
And we're not gonna, we're not gonna have any in-class school, you know, for any time in the, in the foreseeable future. I'd be surprised if it happens in the winter. We seem to have some evidence from Australia that in the winter, COVID-19 does get worse. So, it's been bad enough during the summer. But we can expect that come December, January, it's gonna get out of control.
Yeah, the flu season and all that. Yeah, I know. I know.
It appears it is gonna operate somewhat like flu. One of the things that it has been doing is it has been totally suppressing flu. In Australia, for example, it's down five, to 5% of what it usually is.
But you know what, Valerie? Teachers have to teach at school. They won't be teaching from home.
Yeah, they've been saying that. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, you have to go to school.
Every district?
I don't know. I know in my district, they, we have to teach at school in an empty classroom. And we have to do it at school on, on, yeah, not, only parents that have children can ask to stay home. But, but the majority have to stay at school. Or if you have an underlying condition, you can also stay at home.
Which district is yours?
OMSD.
Oh, really? Because they're not usually that hard to deal with.
Yeah, they're being very strict. I, I asked to stay home and, and I was granted to stay home, but-
Yeah, you have three kids.
Yeah, I have three kids and then I've got my Theo. But, but yeah, everybody else has to report at 7:30 and they have to stay till 3:30 every day.
I never have a problem with OMSD. So, as far as kids and parents are concerned, they're okay. But I guess they're being tough on, on the teachers. That's interesting.
Very tough.
I know CNUSD isn't, I don't know if, I haven't heard anything of them requiring the teachers to go in. But I certainly know they don't have any schedules in place. The teachers are, you've seen the, the teachers talking, Liz. They're, they're saying, we don't know anything yet. We don't know what kids we have, what class we have, how many kids we have, what we're gonna be teaching. They still know nothing. Nothing.
We got our, our rosters today, our student rosters. We also, we had train, we have training all this week. I mean, every, every day, three times a day, we have Zoom trainings. And so, oh, yeah, I mean, we're, they're on it. I wish they would have done the trainings earlier, not one week before. For us, it's one week before school starts.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
But, you know, you're, like you said, if-
Mandatory? Are they making those trainings mandatory for the teachers?
Trainings are not mandatory. And we're getting paid to do it, you know, but they're not mandatory.
Because I did talk to a couple of the program specialists and I said, and they said, look, Valerie, we did, because I was getting on them for not training the teachers. And she goes, they go, Valerie, we did have trainings for the teachers, but many of them didn't come because it wasn't mandatory. And I'm just like, are you kidding me?
Yeah, it, you know, the thing is, is it's, it's not mandatory, but it's mandatory that we Zoom every day. It's mandatory we use Google Classroom. It's mandatory that we do a lot of the things that they're asking. And so, you better know how to do it. You know, or you could be written up for not doing it.
Yeah.
What is, what is the rationale for making people go to empty classrooms?
Uh, maybe it, it will keep them on task, you know? I'm thinking. You know, no interruptions at home.
Oh, okay.
I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm shocked though, because I guess that, because the kids aren't there, they're not as worried because they didn't wanna go back to school with the kids there.
Yeah, with kids not there, they're not as worried. Yes.
Okay.
There's just the other, the other staff that's there that you can train things.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Exactly. Interesting.
So, can I go back to the, can I go back to the question about what's gonna happen when your child does not wanna get onto the virtual learning? I mean, there was a few times last, last March, April, whatever the months were, where Julian refused to do the work. So, all I did was I wrote refused on all his work and took a picture of it and turned it in all that time. And then I documented every time he wouldn't get on to go online. But at one point, I mean, he's gonna get behind if he doesn't wanna go online. So, what do you do in that case?
Oh, you, you keep doing what you're doing. Document every single time if they have a lesson and he won't come sit down and listen. You document, you know, I, they did, it's, what is what I did and he wouldn't come. I keep documenting. And then we put it back on them. What are they gonna do about it?
Okay.
How are they, how are they going to have him access the curriculum? It's their problem to figure out.
Yeah. Now, here's the thing that the, where the districts will rip you off and play you for a sucker big time, is they'll convey to you, and it's, it really is, this is just about- Is they'll convey to you, and it's, it really is, this is just about as absurd as a Newport cigarette commercial. Teaching you how rich and young and white and twenty-one and sitting in a boat in Newport Harbor you're gonna be just if you smoked these cigarettes. But it's the same way that somehow awful things are gonna happen to you. If the kid doesn't make the grades that the district wants. That's not true. Who cares in fifth or sixth grade? Do you remember what your grades were in fifth or sixth grade? Does anybody care? Does anybody? It doesn't make any difference. They, it makes a difference to them because they can cover their ass saying, look, you know how well your kid is doing. Look at the great grades, he's doing, you know, he's doing his academics and everything. And so you'll see that the kid can't even read, and they'll give an A minus in eleventh grade, I think you're particular kid. When the kid can't even read, he's reading the third grade level according to the district. So this is what they do. The grades don't make any difference. And it, it kinda makes a difference in high school, but not that much. Because so what? If you don't get a high school diploma, you go to the community college, you learn the stuff at the community college, you get yourself an associate's degree. And does, does anybody wanna know at that point with your high school diploma? Nobody cares. So uh, this is all basically for the district to gaslight you about how some calamity is gonna happen to you if you don't do things. The only thing that really matters is, have you learned the stuff that matters? Can you read? Can you write? Can you reason? Can you do math and stuff of this nature? That's the stuff that matters. And that's the stuff that they're not gonna teach you by torturing the kid, or having the parent torture the kid for three hours a night to do this homework. Which the kid doesn't actually learn to do anything, and the kid does learn that the whole action of learning sucks. And that's a hard thing to teach people, because everybody is hardwired to wanna learn. The kid crawling around on the floor when he's six months old, he's always wanting to learn. He studies everything, he puts everything in his mouth, he handles everything. I mean, learning is just something that everybody wants to do. I mean, that's the way we are. You gotta go through years of school to learn that, that you don't wanna learn. And, and, and that is not something that you want anybody to teach your kid. And that's what happens when you torture the kid to do all kinds of homework. It's just to make things real disagreeable and teach the kid, what I wanna do is make sure they have to learn anything. This is not what you ever wanna learn. So that's something you don't wanna let the district do to you. So if the thing, i- if the thing goes to pieces and the kid can't function, the kid can't do anything like Valerie was saying. You take, you take it to the district and say, well, you see, it's not working.
They're, they're gonna be expecting us to teach them, I mean, I'm sorry. I'm gonna still have to direct my son. He's only in first grade, so they're gonna expect me to sit there all day with him and make sure he's on task during virtual learning and plus do homework with him?
Well, they can expect again. Your first grade kid, you're supposed to torture him all day?
We should even have homework now. We shouldn't have homework.
Okay, I hope we don't, because that'll be something I'm gonna have on my IEP that Julian will not get homework.
And if he gets homework, you don't make him do the homework. And what are they gonna do about it? Now, how come the kid doesn't wanna do this stuff? If he has a problem with being able to read, if he has a problem being able to look at things, what kind of learning disabilities he, does he have that's making that happen? This is a great time to find out what those are and get something done about it.
Yeah, we're getting assessments. Yep.
So, you know, if he has a problem with reading, uh, and he can't understand what's going on, that sort of stuff starts to turn up a little in first grade. But the print is big and it's still a lot of pictures and everything. So usually, if the kid has tracking problems and stuff, it doesn't show up too much then. But when a kid gets to second or third grade, then it gets ugly. And when you see it coming, it's a good thing to take care of it before it's a serious problem. And if the kid's not able to pay attention to things, well, why can't he pay attention to things? Does it torture the kid to look at stuff? Is it, does he have an auditory processing problem, so that he can't really understand what he's hearing? That's no fun. Trying to listen to stuff and you can hear all right, but you can't figure out what you're hearing, that gets old quickly for anybody. And if that's what's happening to him, well, you know, he doesn't have ADHD or something, he needs to, he has learning disabilities and make it hard to, to do that. So this is something you get a proper assessment for.
Yeah, this is, this has actually been a blessing, because where they said he was writing all these sentences and yada, 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 well, I don't know, writing was real difficult when he was at home with me. He, I had to write everything down for him and then he had a copy it, but supposedly at school, he was writing sentences all by his own and, and asking to do extra. And I'm like, no, he's not asking to do extra. What are you bribing, what are you bribing him with? Because he's not asking, asking to do extra. He hates writing.
Man, that's something you wanna find out why that is. Does he, does he have uh, OT problems that make it difficult to actually form the letters and stuff? You're never gonna find that out from an OT assessment from a district, because OT assessments net, from districts are never any good, ever.
Yep, nope.
Angelina, is your son autistic?
Yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, so, I mean, have they, have they discussed what his bad sensory triggers are? And his good sensory triggers are and, and also, I mean, those are things that are major, important. Uh, you know, for your son. And then how does he learn? I mean, I've had to figure out that the best way my sons learns, learns is through academic apps. On a, on a tablet. And so we do his math and his ever, uh, reading. I mean, everything is done on, I could, because that's how he learns. He doesn't learn by watching a teacher on a, on a, on a Chromebook. You know, he learns, uh, we, I could sit there and work with him. And so I made sure that he was given a, I mean, it took forever to get the tablet home, but um, that he has his tablet and he does all his academics on a tablet. And that's where he practices his letters and writing, because that's where he'll do it. He won't do it any other way. And he doesn't like manipulatives and he doesn't like hands-on. And he just, again, it's a bad sensory trigger for him, and then he refuses to do it. But if you give him an iPad and you put that in front of him, he is engaged, he's focused, and he works. So that's what I have in his, in his IEP too, that they accommodate with, for him in that area.
Wow, I love that idea.
Yeah, you have to figure out what works for him. And the thing is, how come, you know, the, the autism specialist that's sitting there at the table at IEP never says one word on how my child, because they don't know.
Yeah, that's the first thing I told Angie is, your problem is you don't have an autism specialist on your team.
Yeah, I have, no, well, I have one, but she never speaks. She never has said one word.
Yeah, I know.
Never, one word. She never gives any suggestion. I have to fit, I have to, I have to educate myself in autism. Like you said, Valerie, educate yourself in what your child's disability is, which I done. And because of it, I, you know, I've gone back and said, you know, this is how he learns, this is how, you know, what are, these are his bad sensory triggers. These are his good sensory triggers. All those things have to be, you know, thought about. And, and you, you, Angelina, you have to, those are the things you need to be doing.
Well, and districts are very, very, very places. They think that it's a virtue to teach people to do what they call non-preferred tasks. Well, which is, which is bullshit. The fact is, is an infinite amount of stuff that people can learn. And the way kids find useful, you, the, the way kids find ways to, to use their time effectively is to avoid certain things and pursue others. And they know better than anybody else what that is. So if a kid, you know, for example, if a kid like me does, is not interested in men's fashion or basketball. The evidence, the thing is not to make me wanna do these things precisely because they're non-preferred. The thing is, you know, is to, you know, let me do something else. And then what happens, there is no question that we have to do stuff that we don't like to do.
Yeah.
But the way we learn to do stuff that we don't have to do is there's something that we do wanna do. And it turns out that we have to do these things in order to do what it is that we wanna do. And so we are naturally compelled by life itself to do stuff we don't particularly feel like doing. So then, that's the way you teach people to do stuff to the degree that they have to that they don't wanna do. You put them in a situation where they have to, not because you impose some kinda artificial constraint or punishment on them. But simply because, look, if you wanna learn, you know, if you're interested in trains or something like that. If you wanna actually become a, a railroad engineer, well, you're gonna have to learn to read and write and a bunch of other things of that nature. Uh, if you wanna, you know, if you wanna uh, uh, write games for computers. Well, it turns out you're gonna have to learn some, some arithmetic and some things of this nature. And, and so that's how come you like things. It's the same way that as an advocate, there's a lot of stuff that I haven't been interested in. When I got into this, I was not at all interested in things like OT and speech and everything, but it's turned out I've had to learn a lot of these different things. And because I've had to learn them, I've learned them, and now they've become more preferred things. But it's not because anybody made me do this, just because it's non-preferred and it's a virtue to do stuff you don't wanna do. It's because life itself has compelled me to do stuff that I didn't wanna do, and so that's how I, you know, that's how I learned. And, and in fact, learned to do stuff that I didn't formally wanna do. And that's how it works for everybody else. And that's how people will continue wanting to learn. That when they find things in life disciplines and to do the stuff that they don't wanna do. Because all of a sudden, the stuff you don't wanna do, yeah, you do wanna do it, because, you know, this is, this is what you gotta do to get to what you want. And, and you, you have to not keep the districts from telling you like, it's some kind of a goal that people should do non-preferred stuff. That shouldn't ever be a goal if you put up with in any IEP.
Yeah, well, and focusing on their strengths, which they never do. So that, that then they can work on what they like to do. That, because they don't ever do that. They don't focus on strengths. All they focus on in weak is their weaknesses and their deficits.
Which is fine, we oughta, we, we oughta indeed address deficits and weaknesses when they get in the way of the kid pursuing his strengths. The kid wants to be able to learn stuff, okay, he needs to be able to read without suffering. Is he, what's he gonna have? What's he gonna have to do to be able to get out of the way what's preventing him from doing that?
Yes.
And, and you know, if he has an auditory processing problem that prevents him from being able to distinguish different phonemes. He's never gonna learn how to read properly, he's never gonna learn phonics properly until like it's taken care. When he learns the phonics, then it gets easier to read, and then it turns out that he's able to read about, you know, whatever he's just interested in, chemistry or trains or what have you.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, that, that's uh, autistic children, they don't learn the conventional way. And, and that's what they, you know, I thought when my child went into a special ed class that they would give, they would teach him in the way he's supposed to learn. But they still don't even do that. They're still teaching all the children in that class the way a, a normal, a general ed teacher would teach uh, uh, students. But, you know, they all are, should be individualized. That's why they're in there and differentiated, and they should be on their own program. That's what I don't get, why they're still all doing the same thing, is what I've noticed when I've observed.
Well, they think it's administratively convenient to do that. They think what a hassle it's gonna be to individualize things for each kid. They don't realize that it's a whole lot less of a hassle if you can work with a kid and the kid sees you as a friend and not as an enemy. Because the kid doesn't have a lot of power, but a kid has a great power to cause a teacher to fail.
Well, I mean, it's like I told Valerie, you know, Valerie knows this, you know, I asked the teacher at an IEP, you know, how often do you work with my child? And she said, you know, individually, one-on-one, and she goes, well, eh, never. Are we supposed to do that? She asked the case manager, are we supposed to work one-on-one with the student? And I wa- I was in shock. And the, the, the case manager said, well, of course, you're supposed to do whatever is necessary to teach that child. But she's like, oh, I didn't know I was allowed to do that.
I hope this is recorded.
That's what I said, that's the first thing I said. You were recording, right?
Yeah, and, you know, and I'm, yeah, and I'm totally gonna bring it up again when we have the continuance. But um, but shocking, you know, they don't even know that they can work with the child one-on-one. That she only works with them in groups, that's it, in the rotating groups. That's the only time she would, and I had it put in the IEP that she worked with my child one-on. Really? You have to put that in an IEP for a teacher to work with your child one-on-one?
And she's a special ed teacher.
And she's a special ed. I mean, shocking.
Yes.
You never get used to it completely, it's true.
No. Really, I know, I'm not even an educator, and I think I could go in there and run circles around half these people.
Oh, my God.
Like, what, what are you doing? It's just crazy.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, you guys, well.
Well, a lot of them, they're taught ass covering. And as soon, as soon as ass covering becomes a priority, you will become stupid. Because you have to put a lot of brain cells into covering your ass, and when you do that, there really isn't anything left to do anything else.
Yes.
You have to get used to the idea that, well, I'm not gonna cover my ass here. I'm just gonna, I, I'm gonna do my job and, and see what happens. And it, you know, it, in the uh, psychology of computer programming, uh, uh, Gerald Weinberg talked about this confrontation that a programmer had with his manager. And the manager had to figure that it's a lot easier to get crappy managers than good programmers, and so therefore the manager had a kid. And, and that's true, if you're doing good work, then, you know, that'll happen. And, and this is the way it is. Districts are interested in, in, in covering their asses administratively. And they, and they teach the teachers that somehow this is their obligation. This is not your obligation. Your obligation is to teach the kids. If they want, if the districts ask us to be covered, that's not your job, that's their lawyer's job.
Yes. And the special ed administrator's job, exactly. Yeah, yeah, it's a very broken system.
Certainly is.
Very broken.
COVID nineteen is just making that more obvious.
Oh, my gosh, I know.
In every way. I mean, uh, uh, COVID nineteen has done a great job of showing what it, it just completely screwed up incompetent.
Yes.
Tailing state, the United States of America is, because the United States of America has become a laughingstock to the world. Twenty-five percent of the world's deaths, twenty-five percent of the world's cases, and getting worse all the time with four and a half percent of the world's population. It's just absolutely pathetic.
It is. It is. It's, it's this really scary time. And uh, yeah, and our kids' education is going down the tubes even more than it was before. It's even more at risk now. So, yeah, that's why I keep saying, can you imagine if parents just let them do whatever they want? In this time, Peter, there, so many parents are gonna get nothing. So many kids are gonna get absolutely nothing, absolutely nothing right now. Cause they, they're not gonna do anything.
And the advantage of being aggressive about things, I mean, giving them an opportunity to be nice all the time, is right now they know they're gonna be short of money. And, and when I pointed out at Santa Monica, uh, I, I said to the sped, and it had, the sped had said, well, we don't have, you know, thirty thousand bucks or whatever for this. I says, well, if you don't have that, then you got a whole lot more than that to litigate this. And you're gonna explain to the public why it is that you don't wanna provide what the kid needs after you've been screwing her over for ten years. And you'd rather spend a whole lot more money than that uh, to litigate this. And so they went away and they thought about it, and they gave us another real totally crappy offer. And so we, we came back and they realized this isn't gonna happen. So, you know, we'll see it here. And they, they came back and said, okay, we'll give you thirty-two grand. Well, we'd asked for thirty-five, but thirty-two we can handle. So, and, and now we're all set. But they had a, they had a see that that's the way it's gonna be. And I have seen some evidence that if they, if they're looking at fifty or sixty thousand dollars in litigation and, and they can settle the thing for twenty, they're more likely now to do so than they were.
Okay, that's good to know, that's good.
And one thing I've seen, which is, yeah, this is from Second Kings, it's chapter nine or ten, I think it is. Uh, and Jehu had just put Jezebel to death. And also, the two kings had been there, and so he'd killed the two kings. The, the king of Judah was visiting and, and Jehoram, the king of Israel, you know, he got shot through the back and, and stuff. So he was out of the way. So what he did is, he still, he captured Israel, but the capital city was Samaria. And they were, and, and in fact, uh, Ahab's family was still actually more powerful militarily. So what Jehu said is, look, you have, you know, I, I killed the two kings. And, but, you know, you have the seventy sons of Ahab there, and you have chariots, and you have an army and, and so forth. So take the best of your uh, master's sons and send them on your master's throne and fight for your master's house. So he said that to them, and they, and they looked at each other and they just lost heart completely. And they said, okay, well, what do you want us to do? So he says, well, come, you know, pick, you know, take the heads of your, your master's sons and come and see me tomorrow morning. So that's what they did. And, and everything was pleasantly resolved. And I have seen a number of ties, and I said, look, you know, here we are, so why don't you go ahead? And, you know, this is what you gotta do. You gotta go ahead and litigate this. Pick yourself a hearing officer and we'll square off and we'll do this, since this is what you wanna do. And then all of a sudden, they get more reasonable. I've seen that happen a number of times.
Yes, yes.
You just have to give them a chance, and if they wanna do the right thing, you're gonna be nice and you're gonna, you're gonna give them what they want, which is administrative convenience and their budget and their public relations, okay? You wanna, you wanna take care of the kid, that's all I'm looking for. Then I'll take care of you and I'll be nice and I'll, and I'll make life easy for you, if that's what you wanna do. If you wanna hurt the kid, then I gotta do something about it. But I'm not gonna do anything about it if you don't make me. I'm old and I'm slow and I'm fat, and I don't wanna work if I don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, it's just too bad that parents have to go that far to have them do what's right for the child. Cause most parents won't. Because most parents won't.
Right, that's the world we live in, so we gotta deal with it. Okay, you don't, you don't like, you know, you don't like poopy diapers and stuff, well, then you don't do daycare. I mean, that's, that's just what the job is. It would be nice if it wasn't all about them trying to figure out how not to do their jobs and us figuring, that'd be great. They actually had the idea that their job was actually to teach the kids.
Right.
It was unicorns hot prancing on the district lawn and inviting us to the IP meeting, but I don't ever see any unicorns in the CNUSD lawn.
Exactly, exactly. Like, or, yeah, yeah, like having those idiots from that, um, from that, uh, lawyer's agency going and training them, you know, how to coerce and manipulate and intimidate parents in IEP meetings, which is what they do.
Right.
And spending time that way, instead of actually spending time actually teaching the child and providing what they need. It's just, it's just so backwards.
Are you gonna post that, um, that PowerPoint, Valerie, from?
I, I did. I did.
In a soup to nuts thing? Yeah.
Yes, the soups to nuts. Yep, posted it.
I missed it. Which word did, where did you post it?
I posted it on the Advocates for Angels page. Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna look for it.
Yeah, actually, one of the other girls, I think it was on your site, Peter, she, I couldn't figure out how to get it into a PDF document. And then I, she got it into it, so I just took it from there, and then I posted it on my page.
Well, what kind of document was it in the first place?
We just had it in a, um, in a PDF document. Yeah, in a PDF document.
But I thought you said you were trying to get into a PDF and you couldn't.
Well, to post a PDF on Facebook is super hard. It's very hard.
It's much, it's much worse trying to, trying to put Word stuff up there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's difficult.
So you had a PDF.
Images and, you know, and links, that's fine, but to do a PDF or a Word doc is very, I, I couldn't even figure it out. I, it was really hard. But then one of the girls did it on your page, so I took it off there.
Cool.
Yeah. Okay, you guys, well, it's, well, it's about 6:30, so thanks, and thanks for coming, Peters. Good to see you again, and thanks for all your recommendations and advice. We always like to hear from you.
Yes, we, we missed you, Peter.
Don't worry about that.
Thank you.
See you Monday for Facebook Live.
Okay, bye.
Take care, everyone. Bye, thank you.